All right, we're going to call to order this work session for the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's September 11th, and all three commissioners are present. The first on agenda, first item on the agenda is from the Clerk's Office for Election Return Services Agreement. Thank you. Is there someone online from the Clerk's Office? Okay, I thought I saw a hand raised. All right, great.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kylie Ferris. I am currently serving as the election supervisor for Monroe County. Before I begin, the Clerk has asked me to invite you guys to attend tonight's public discussion on vote centers, which I heard you guys mention earlier today during this discussion. Also, the work session appears, the work session appearance comes as surprise, given the Clerk's request to be on the formal agenda. While the product with Ann Island is ready, time is still of essence, as we are quickly coming up on a big election. I am here today because Monroe County has an amazing opportunity to partner with Ann Island and their software, U.S. Elections Live. Though located not far from Bloomington, Intel City, Ann Island is a partner and flagship company who focuses on high-end IT strategies and complies for large corporate companies. Most of their clients are Fortune 500 companies, including DOW Chemicals and Netflix. U.S. Elections Live offers a complete intelligent soft solution to update results immediately to public candidates, media, and all interested parties. The software was specifically designed to assist county clerks in pushing election results out immediately, and has already been implanted in eight Indiana counties. Testimonies from those eight clerks who work directly with our county clerk includes Putnam County Clerk Tracy Briggs, who says, "U.S. Elections Live is the real deal. Thanks to them, our elections was absolutely seamless. I would highly recommend them to anyone." Perry County Clerk Rachel Rohr, who said, "I put my faith and trust in this company and will highly recommend." Posey County Clerk Kay Kilroy, who said, "U.S. Elections Live is the website you never knew you needed." Spencer County Clerk Darrell Stevens, who said, "U.S. Elections Live is the future go-to site for all Indiana elections." DeBose County Clerk Amy says, "U.S. Elections Live is the one-stop information portal for voters who find valuable information before, during, and after elections." Jay County Clerk John Eads says, "Hey, here is Jay County. U.S. Elections Live is new. I am looking forward to how great the general election will be with them." For all, as a follow-up with County Clerk Eads' testimony, Ann Island is uniquely positioned to have Monroe County set up and ready in time for what could be the most historical election in the history of this country to date. They offer a telephone app and the ability to opt-in for updated texts regarding election results, and none of what they are offering requires connectivity to Monroe County government technologies. This alone offers the transparency and immediacy to voters, candidates, and all parties interested in Monroe County elections. Their mobile technology and platforms can accommodate iOS, Android, Windows, and BlackBerry. Because they can speak to their products themselves, the Clerk personally invited them from Ann Island to be here today to respond to any specific questions you may have about U.S. elections. Also, our office is going to be holding a event on November 7th, sorry, September 17th, for National Voter Registration Day, and my office is working with PACE and Indiana University on representative governments to hold a registration drive from 11 to 2. If you have any questions about the contract, please let us know.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Yes, I'm wondering why our own GIS group isn't doing this, and they're here today. Perhaps we can hear from them?
Sure, if they're willing to come speak.
Hello? Hi, Tronan Wright Randolph, Monroe County Surveyor. As you know, we've been taking a good effort in trying to grow our GIS program, and we've been able to provide numerous services, and also some of them to the Clerk's Office and voter registration. When we were reached out about this, we started to look into it. We met with the Clerk in the Clerk's Office. We demoed what we were able to do. At the end of it, so I guess we do have the bandwidth and the capability to kind of host this data. There's, the data that is currently being requested to be hosted can be hosted in a number of different ways. So we presented our prototype to the Clerk, and she determined she wanted to go in a different direction. So with that, and you know, kind of the sensitivity of elected offices and their discretionary measures and way that they feel about running their office, when the Clerk declined to want to move with our direction, then, you know, I felt like we can come here and answer questions, but, you know, I feel it comes to more of an elected decision of how they want to move their office, and we want to make sure that everyone knows we're here to assist, we're ready to answer questions, and we could potentially host this data. We intend to host this data. You know, that was some positive discussion with the Clerk's Office, but, you know, we ultimately will defer to her as far as what kind of services she wants, and she didn't want our GIS services, so.
Let's see if there are questions. Did you want to?
If there's any other technical questions, we do have Dr. John Batton, our GIS coordinator, here.
Did you? I don't understand what the difference would be between what we can offer and what we, the Clerk is proposing here, because certainly it comes out of the election office in terms of what that data actually is, and is then shared with another entity before it can be posted, and I understand that they're looking to drill down on a lot of additional data that would go with the voter information. But this is stuff that could be done across time by our own GIS system, is what I was thinking, but again, I need to hear from the experts.
Yeah, the process is, I'm trying to think of a good word for it. It can be streamlined. There's a number of things that need to occur ahead of time. One of them would be a connection to a database. That would be a view connection, so we actually wouldn't be touching any data. That data would either be articulating back to our GIS via like a SQL Server connection, which is a database connection, or it could be done by the Clerk's Office. My understanding of how Ann Island does it is that the Clerk would be actually typing in the data, and then that data populates into an interface. So that's a very easy process for us to mimic as well. Secondly, the concern here would be that we have a very short turnaround, right? It's two months from the election, and so building something out like this, we do have the bandwidth to do it and the capacity to do it, but it is a fairly quick turnaround, right? So that's a concern, I guess. But the process is making sure that the data has that connection, and it's also making sure that the data is entered correctly, right? What it is, is it's a live feed that could show information, not just about voter turnout, but what we could provide in a GIS scope is where these votes are actually occurring by a precinct level, right?
Wow.
So I demoed this with 2024 primary data, just for a handful of candidates, just to see voter, basically, I wanted to see what the turnout was from the 2024 data, then also kind of what the results looked like for just winners of these different results, right? To see, do we have an urban rural issue in Monroe County? I don't know if it's an issue, but yes, there is a difference between, yes, between urban and rural votes, right? We do live in a blue county within a red sea, and Bloomington is a blue city within a kind of reddish county, purplish county. So, yeah, it's doable. We do want to make sure that the Clerk's Office is supportive of everything that we do, right? And because we're building relationships and support from different offices. But, yeah, any technical questions I can assist with?
Not at this time. I guess for me, this isn't a question, but it was, looks like it's a three-year contract, if I read this correctly, and so they're asking for $41,000 to, I think, for a contract that, as I understood it, could be done in-house. And I know we're not the fiscal body, but I also am aware of spending taxpayer dollars.
Right.
I just want to stress that it's very important to make sure, whatever we do, we have the support of the Clerk's Office, and we really need them to take ownership of this data, because this data needs to be managed by voter registration. Again, we plan to work with the Clerk, but, you know, it comes to kind of their, I guess, decision of what direction they want to move their office, and so we, I just really want to echo that again, that we're here to provide assistance, services, and we leave those decisions to you, and, but, just wanted to stress that point one more time.
I appreciate that. Yeah, so this would fall into, you know, an existing appropriation of some sort. They're not asking for an additional, so this wouldn't be reviewed by the council.
And I think from the legal department, we had one issue or one concern that I think that the vendor could probably clear up, and it talks about a grant that has been received. This grant was not through Monroe County. It's $425,000, and it is offsetting the cost of this. I guess, knowing nothing about the grant, what happens if that grant gets revoked or anything like that? Does that change the cost of the contract?
If I may interject, I do believe the grant referenced by that contract is a grant that another county received, and in speaking to the Secretary of the State in regards to the application of that grant fund to Monroe County's contract, the Secretary of State said that can't be done, so the offset cost would not occur. It would be $40,000 for the first year.
Okay. Except that there is an email in our packet, says that they can, I mean, there's something new in there.
I think at best, it's an open question, and so maybe the vendor could provide assurance that, hey, if something happens with that grant funding, we won't be charged more or not. I think that's a basic question.
Did you want to address that? Anybody?
With that grant, we did get the written confirmation that that is going to be for us to use, and then I just had a couple of things that I wanted to touch on was, with us using Ann Island, they don't have to reinvent the wheel. They are, the product's already existing. We only have to give them our information through HEART, and so when it comes down to it, it's going to be so much quicker for us to just use Ann Island than it would be for us to go through the surveyor's office. Also, another reason on why we would prefer to use Ann Island is because in elections, almost all of our technology is not connected to the county IT, and so Clerk Brown just does not want anything election-wise connected with the county IT department. And then I will let Ann Island discuss more on the contract-wise.
May I ask you, since you're still at the microphone, do you know why Harrison County turned this down, why they are not?
Theirs was because of the, it was the bios of the candidates which we had elected that we did not want to use.
Did you have anything you wanted to add? We have other items on our agenda, if you could be brief. Please introduce yourself, welcome.
Nice to meet you guys. Anjan Kashi, Ann Island. So I guess, do you guys have any specific questions so far, after what you've heard that I can help address?
Well, for me, I heard Ms. Ferris say that there's a speed issue here. I'm wondering what the difference is in that. Is it five seconds? Is it five hours difference if we use Ann Island versus our own in-house? I just don't know, and I don't know who to direct that question to.
Sure. So, you know, I can answer from at least our software standpoint. So we have, basically have built our own software, which would basically help to, you know, would then help to improve this whole process. So currently, the Clerk's Office, if they wanted to actually upload results to the public, they would basically post, it could be their, you know, own PDF file onto Facebook or onto website, or into the news, and it's not a true, true live data feed. So within, you know, within us, it would probably take them just a few minutes to actually upload results, and they would actually be shown by the precinct or then by the vote center to the public in just a matter of minutes. As it happens, instead of having to wait, it could be hours, or, you know, it could be even days for them to see it. So the speed issue isn't necessarily due to the internet, it's just due to the process. And so we have it down to where we now have, I believe as of this day, we have at least eight counties using this. So we basically proven this process, and our goal is to keep on growing this thing throughout the, you know, state and then beyond our state. And plus, we do more than just this. This is just one of our own modules, but we've been in the business since '07, and this is our, you know, business. I mean, this is what we do, and this is what we live. So for us to actually be able to handle this and actually do it, we can assure you that, yes, we will get it done, and that you, and that you will be satisfied with what you would get. But again, you know, I can go on and on about what all we do, how we, you know, can do it, but I think at the end of the day, we are a business, and we have a team of people, and this is what we do. So if I can answer any other questions that kind of may help to give you more info, I can do that.
So how secure is this live data feed, and why is it different sending it to you versus our own GIS system? Or maybe Mr. Cronin wants to weigh in here, too, on some stuff.
Sure, so I can answer at least from then, you know, from, you know, at least our standpoint. So as far as security goes, you know, we have three-layer security, so just as good as banks, if not better. So our data is basically encrypted in that, you know, sense that, yeah, it cannot be hacked in that sense. So we will basically, you know, will then ensure that your data is kept safe onto our platforms. So the main thing to also note is that we have our own platform, and it's not just a website. Like, we basically built out a platform, which we have invested, you know, over the span of probably 17 years, I would say at least tens of millions of dollars onto our own platform. So we're not some like, just a website group. So we actually handle many data throughout many, you know, at these major companies. So this is not new to us as far as handling data that is not, or that would be considered very important. So, and the main thing is, all of this data is actually owned by the county, so like, this data is actually Monroe County's data. So this is not data we're actually creating. This is coming out of your own system, but we have had the main process down, and we have the main platform down to where it basically portrays it in a way that is easy for the public, and then for you then, as a county, to actually see it.
I don't, we don't typically get the work packets until really right before our meetings, like the day before, so I don't, I haven't been able to explore what the other counties' things look like in terms of the other counties that use service here in Indiana, which is also something I'd like the opportunity to do, which, yeah.
Sure, and to also add to that, too, I just wanted to note, again, I think regarding that one question about the, you know, grant money. So basically, $25,000, that was the grant money that was then, you know, allocated to then one county. That county chose not, didn't have it. So we then spoke with our clerk here, and basically, we were then able to use that same money here, because we already got that grant money back in April. So the, so basically, that money was actually with us for that county, and then after speaking with then their, you know, I guess, it'd be the state's office, they said that we could use that money towards Monroe County, so that your money is basically going to be taking off that $40,000, which would result $15,000 for the first year, and then recurring.
Can the state do that? Ms. Purdy?
I have a question, sorry, just for clarification, and I don't mean to take us back, because that's an interesting statement regarding the grant, but I actually kind of want to, I don't understand the difference in the upload of data. So it was mentioned that HEART would provide the data to you. Can HEART provide the data to our GIS people also? I'm just trying to understand what that difference is, if there is one?
Yeah, I wanted to jump in, but also make sure we gave time for Ann Island. So I want to make a distinction. These are two different types of services. If it's not clear, I'll just cut to the chase. We can develop a web app or a dashboard, and we can host this data, and we can customize it. We plan to continue to do that with the Clerk's Office or voter registration, because it could serve for very valuable analytical purposes. So the concern about the turnaround, that's a real one, but ultimately, it comes to a service kind of choice or direction, and, you know, I hope that as clear as I can make it, is we could provide a service that can host the data, Ann Island can provide a service that hosts the data, and it's the choice that the Clerk wants to go right now, and, you know, it's her decision to be here to request it.
So what you're saying is that the same data that would be transmitted from HEART to Ann Island is the same data that would be transferred to our office?
We have access to that data, yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
I can't see any way of that not being a possibility, but again, I don't want to speak out of line, because that would be something that the voter registration or, you know, the Clerk's Office would be able to say, yes, definitively, we can give this to you.
The turnaround time he's referencing is to set up the program, not the data.
Not the actual data, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's all, that's what he's, we had a question for Mr. Cronin about security, since that was raised, right?
So I'm just going to go ahead and address the elephant in the room there, because I think a lot of this stems back to the situation we had back in June. So one thing I've commented on before, and I want to make it perfectly clear to everyone here in the public, during our recent issue that we had, no way, shape, or form was any data belonging to the clerk, election operations, or voter registration in any way, shape, or form affected. Most of the data that runs through voter registration during election periods is done through the state's SVRS system. That's all contained on their cloud, in their security, and never touches our network. So from a perspective of security and concerns that I have, I have no concerns over election security or the security of our networks or our systems at the county at this time that would prevent or cause any issue going forward. I understand that the Clerk's had her reservations and has her statements, and I understand those, but I am stating for the record that I have no security concerns whether we host this data or with the upcoming election.
Thank you.
As Greg just said, all of our data is currently being held with the state. That's why we would prefer to continue to have all of our data not held within the county. Ultimately, for transparency, we would prefer to work with an independent vendor.
Well, I kind of want to ask about the contract, which is a three-year contract?
Correct.
And there's no election next year?
Correct. You still have to continue to pay it so that we can maintain the data that we have on there, because we will be uploading data from this election, and then we will also be eventually uploading past data, so we'll be doing that during the off-season election year.
And is that a cost that we would incur if the county were to do it? Would we have to pay the county during the off-year to maintain data?
As I said, we would prefer to work with an individual vendor.
Since I understand that this could put a lot of pressure on our GIS people to put this together so quickly for this election, it might make sense to me, although I really don't see why an outside vendor would be considered to be more transparent. I don't believe that there are laws requiring transparency of them the way there are in the county. But I can imagine signing a contract for one year to relieve the pressure on our employees, but a three-year contract doesn't really make much sense to me.
The three-year contract is to hold out with the current sitting county clerk, and then after that, the decision would be for the next clerk.
So the $15,000 covers 2024?
Mm-hmm.
Just, it's just for the last few months of this year, and then?
That is the startup cost.
Okay. Because to me, a year is like 365 days, not, yeah, 111 at this point. So, we're not voting on this today, right?
It's on our work session, so we could put it on our agenda if you want for the 25th.
Yep. That'll give us time to look at some of these other, and reach out to other people if we want, yeah. And I did look through the PowerPoint that you sent this morning and things like that, too, so.
Yeah, and the clerk just wants to reassure the voters of transparency and respect for them on getting these results out to them as quickly as possible.
If somebody else wants to make a comment here?
Hi, Jason Funk from the Auditor's Office. I just have one question for Election Central. What is the concern with speed? Because the data needs to be correct. We don't, I feel like we shouldn't be concerned about speed.
The speed is the process of getting the software up and going. It's not the speed of getting the results out. It's having the fact that we have this software that's already reinvent, that's invented. It doesn't need to be reinvented.
Well, basically, I just wanted to state out loud, my concern with speed being such a concern here with everyone else, when this data, we already have this data in-house, and I definitely feel like our GIS coordinator and our surveyor's office is more than capable of keeping this in-house and creating this platform for the public to use. I don't necessarily believe we should be focused on getting returns out in an incredibly fast manner, when the returns and that data needs to be correct when it's relayed to the public. And that's my main concern with this, so.
Yeah, I see that, and I think one of the things that's interesting is that in the past, and I wouldn't say this was the case with the most recent elections, but several years back, we had very slow election results, but it wasn't because we didn't have software, it was because there were issues with counting and making sure the results were right before they were released. So no matter what, that's going to take whatever time that's going to take to get the results and make sure they're right. And so the question of speed is about getting it out to the public, and that means you have to input the data somewhere, and it goes out to a company or a platform or something on our website, or whatever it might be, that will then, that information can then be available. So I don't want the public to be confused by this either, because I know there have elections passed, that there were issues with how long it took to get results, and those were issues relating to getting information back from the various precincts and other issues. So that's not what this is about. This is about reporting that data once it is available and correct.
I think it's the granularity of what can be seen, because I don't think we've had a lot of complaints from the general. a lot of complaints from the general public about the actual results.
Right, right. But the idea of having, for example, as Dr. Baton talked about, having maps, you know, so if you could, you know, somebody will say, well, it says on this that we're still waiting on, you know, Perry 10. Well, where the heck is Perry 10? Well, we would know that without having to go look back and trying to find a precinct map on our website, which is impossible right now, by the way. But, you know, actually, without having to find that map, it would show up on a map-based system. So I could see a lot of advantages to having our GIS do this, because what happens then is if the next clerk decides to cancel the contract, then we're back at square one, and we're going to have to build everything and then backfill information. So, but I'm happy to put this on our agenda for our next meeting, if that's, so we can do some more reading and research. Is there, since this is a, this is a system that's running in other counties, can we actually go to those counties and see what it looks like? Okay, all right.
And would we be able to manipulate some of the data that's there to see what goes on, I mean, across time, to look at stuff for trends and things like that?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, this has been, you know, it's been live, so you can actually go through the website and then view counties that are, you know, now using it. So you can, you can actually see, you know, it could be past data, like there's even data from, I think Perry County from 2019, that then you can actually see how that, you know, it looks like, where the BIOS, so yeah, I mean, it's all out there, it's, you know, all there for the public. Nothing's like being kept off or anything, it's all on.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Krone? We got a, we've got a half hour into this, and?
Sorry, just a quick question. One thing I was unclear of is what the, that is our county's data, so it will be hosted, if we move forward, this will be hosted on another site. But what I'm unclear of, we have to archive that data. So we have to anticipate not only archiving it if we kept the site active, but what happens if that contract expires?
Right.
So that's our data, and what does that look like, getting that data from them? And then we do have to house it again at that point, which puts it on our systems. So that was just a question.
Great, great question. That's, I think, where I was going a bit, but you framed it more accurately than I did, yes.
So the data would still be on the county website as it is, as we post it. It's just a easier, more visual way for the voters to look at the results, so that they have that dashboard that they can go to, but then we still have the PDF version of the results that will be posted onto the county website.
Thank you.
And then there was one last comment from Clerk Brown. She said, this is a historical election, everybody will be waiting for the results.
Would you please send us a list of the counties that are currently using this?
Are all of them listed here?
Yes, they're all there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so you want to put this on our agenda for our next meeting? Okay, all right, good? Okay. All right, thank you all, and thank you all for being here. We appreciate it, appreciate the information and the answers to our many questions. That was really helpful for us, so thank you for that. All right. We have a letter that we need to consider for approval to sign. Who wants to talk about it?
It would be best if, actually, Commissioner Githens did, she would, a little bit more information, but what I can kind of say in a synopsis is that this is a letter of support requested from the Board of Commissioners for the creation of an Economic Development District. And it would be a district using Monroe, Brown, and Owen County.
Right, this is a letter to the Economic Development Administration, and as Ms. Purdy pointed out, the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation has asked us to create and sign this letter of support for the Economic Development District. This is intended, if it is run like it is in other parts of the state, and most other counties are part of an Economic Development District, to bring in things that complement what's available, in this case, all three counties. And so we know that between Monroe and Owen County, for example, we have a lot of life sciences that goes on, and so it would be to make sure that they're doing the work that benefits all three counties and builds upon what they have to offer. I would like to also point out that this is just a letter of support to create the district. It in no way obligates us to spend a single cent on this. I almost said a single penny, and I just couldn't do that. But, so I'm in favor of providing this letter.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Jones?
This commits us to becoming a part of a regional economic development.
It's a support, it's the support of a unified pursuit of a new development district. And it has to be authorized by the Economic Development Administration at the U.S. Department of Commerce.
I...
It doesn't obligate you to anything, you're just supporting the concept.
I'm willing to sign this, mostly just to get more information about it. Back in the early 2000s, the notion of economic, of regional economic development centers was, someone discussed that with me, and when I watched what happened from that time forward, I watched Monroe County really, really thrive, and surrounding counties did not so much. Most of their populations came here to work, they did most of their shopping here, and I am not supportive of that form of economic development. If it truly supports the other parts of the region and helps them to thrive the way that Monroe County has, then I would feel more supportive of this initiative.
So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve signing on to this letter to the Economic Development Administration at the federal level.
A second.
Any other comments or questions? Any public comment on this item? Can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium and Nat U-Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this letter to the Economic Development Administration, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0. Next, we have an update on the jail, Vernal Pike.
Actually, I have two different things, but I'll start with that one. I just, because we had the presentation last week looking at Vernal Pike, and I know we discussed the concern about the sewer availability on that site. I have reached out, and I reached out twice, and I've asked for kind of a technical perspective on that, on can the current system that currently exists, can we hook on to it at that site and be able to utilize it? Is there any other technical problems? Or if not, and there has to be some work done, can we get an estimated cost from the city of what that would be, so we have all that information as we go forward? So I just, so we've reached out to them and to discuss those two things. The second is, last week, I spoke with a couple of the commissioners independently about a letter to support Cimtra. That letter was due to, for the Ready 2 program, that letter was due last week, so I did have Commissioner Githens and Commissioner, my mind is blank, Commissioner Thomas, sorry. Commissioner Thomas signed that letter, so if you guys could ratify that today, that would be great.
Okay. Make a motion to ratify the letter of support of Cimtra for grant application?
Second.
Comments, questions?
Got the letter.
Yeah. All those in favor of ratifying the signatures on that letter, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0. All right.
So can I ask about the property on Vernal Pike? This is not contiguous to the city at this point, and so other properties would have to agree to be annexed in the city if we were to get sewer at Vernal Pike, correct?
My understanding is there has to be a petition for annexation filed with the city before the CBU director would be able to look at the site and determine whether they agree to allow the hook on or not. There is a, as far as I can tell from the annexation statute, it would have to be contiguous to the city of Bloomington, so you would have to figure out how to make that property contiguous, which would involve talking to other individuals and getting them to also agree to be annexed into the city. That seems like, it could potentially be a pretty high hurdle without looking, we looked briefly at the map trying to figure out how that would work. We'd want to work with the city, because they know the rules better than we do, to kind of figure out what their thoughts are on that. But in my mind, knowing what the price would be in order, if we got it approved, to cook it up, is an important factor in determining whether we want to go through the steps of really going through that process or not.
Right.
And I'd be curious as to how long that might take, because what we heard from Mr. Grass last week was that a delay of each month is about a half a million dollars. Isn't that what he said, 500,000? And it feels like it would be rolling the dice, because we have no idea what it would take to get people to voluntarily agree to be annexed, and all it would take would be one person, a property owner, saying no, and we're back at square one. It really feels like a big gamble to me.
Well, I think anything with Vernal Pike at this point is, we have less information about that site than we do the other one.
Right.
We know what the buildable area is pursuant to the slope restrictions. We do not know what a Phase 1 would show. We do not know what the geotech is. So if we decided to go to Vernal Pike, we're going to have to accept some risk that, you know, those things are going to come back to the point where it's going to be a site we can use, because, again, I'm referencing that timeline I put together, that decision needs to be made in September if we're going to be open by 2030, right?
Yeah.
So it's, you know, I just, whatever site we choose, there are always going to be some risks associated with it.
Right.
The primary site that we're looking at, North Park, we have gone through and we've done the geotech. We've done all those things that we have done with every other property to determine whether we think that risk is low enough for us to put our feet down and say, yes, we can build here. You know, if you're going to Vernal Pike, you know, as you guys all know, that's a three or four-month process to get all those reports back and get everything going for it. So at some point, if we're going to meet that timeline, we're going to have, and if we choose to use Vernal Pike, we're going to have to accept some risks that we could fail on that.
And then there's the additional potential time that it would take to go through a rezon process in the city versus a rezon process through the county system, because we also don't know the outcome of that.
They already turned us down once on a rezon issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Jeff?
But I want to thank Jeff for following up on this, that we are not just blowing it off.
We are doing everything we need to do to determine whether that site is viable, and the sewer seems to be a linchpin issue that we need to run down.
Did you have any questions? Okay, all right, thank you. Next, we have three items from planning. The first one is ordinance 2024-40.
I am bringing to you a PUD outline plan amendment. It's Amendment 1, the first request for North Park 2. This is separate from the other larger, North Park PUD. This was created at a separate time and deemed North Park Number 2. So just to familiarize ourselves where we are, on the site is our GIS service beacon illustrating the petition site we're looking at. So this is off of North Vernal Pike. It's actually accessed from North Packing House Road, which is dead ends into the petition site. I'm going to jump to your work session packet. So currently, the site is ZPD. The PUD allows for light industrial and also quarry heavy industrial uses. So this is a 98.6 acre site. This outline plan amendment request is to amend the ordinance for only 27.5 acres of the property. They are proposing to add a use, and that is called mass grading with filling operations. So this use would be only added to 27.5 acres. So the site is a former quarry located south across the bypass from the property that the commissioners own. The site has a few quarry holes on site and quite a few cars features. So currently, the site is surrounded by a few different land uses. To the west, there's some residential areas. To the east and southeast, we have a state police facility and multiple sites that are kind of industrial in use. And then there's a property directly to the north, also owned by the petitioners, which is Packing House Road LLC. They are represented by Bynum, Fanyo &amp; Associates, specifically engineer Daniel Butler. They also own that site, it's currently vacant. So the property has gone through a few different transitions across its public hearing timeline, so it's been reviewed a few different times by Drainage Board, Plan Review Committee, and Plan Commission. So they are proposing to add this fill. The site, the petitioners state, you know, that they intend to use the site for eventual, you know, industrial development, but currently, as is, they'd like to use this for clean fill. And so I'd like to read over what petitioner states the use is. So they state that the fill that the site would see is excess material from construction projects. They state that the fill would be clean material from other projects. It could be soils and aggregates. They state that asphalt will not be taken to the site, but taken to one of their other locations and recycled. Some concrete would be brought to the site where the material would be crushed before incorporating into fill. That onsite crushing of the concrete is possible, but not regularly predicted, and that all fill material must be clean, and no environmental questionable material will be allowed unless tested. And I will come back and talk a little more about clean fill and the testing that they are proposing. So to show you, the site that we're looking at, the 27.5 acres, so on screen is their proposed development plan. So if this ordinance is approved and North Park 2 PUD is amended to add this use, we have, throughout the petition process, we have required a written commitment and a few other conditions. We've explored the environmental conditions of the site. Just looking on screen, you can see a lot of closed contours and identified cars features, and there's multiple open quarry pits. So this grading plan right here has been examined pretty closely, and we've discussed a lot of protections for the rest of the site. So here we are seeing about 23 to 36 feet of fill. It's along the way, you know, there's been some concern about the amount of fill, is this needed? And we do have some examples that were brought up at the last Plan Commission meeting. They are kind of perspective views, and I'll go ahead and put that on screen. So if you can kind of note this kind of foot shape with a little bump out here on the north side, when we switch to the perspective view... north side, when we switch to the perspective view, here on the screen, if you can see my cursor, we can kind of start to see the shape. This is the area with the proposed amount of fill, which, you know, they state could take up to four years in time to reach this elevation. It would be filling an open quarry and matching the elevation to the site to the north, which is shown. It's the farthest towards the top of the page contour lines. So it is kind of matching the surrounding contour area, the surrounding contours. So throughout the process, that has kind of, this last exhibit, I think, really helped Plan Commission and also the Monroe County Historic Preservation Board of Review kind of understand this, the amount of fill that they are proposing. So this is one view of the site fully filled. And then scrolling down, we are looking at quarries. So we are looking southeast right now, almost as if you're standing on the bypass, heading towards Bloomington from Elletsville. So we can see there, these are the current quarry holes here closest on the screen, and then farther towards the top of the page in the background, we can see the fill from another perspective. So I think that's helped everybody put the site kind of in perspective when we talk about, you know, a 27 acre fill site. I'm going to jump back to the grading exhibit. So throughout this process, the Plan Review Committee reviewed this, the proposed development for its compatibility with a comprehensive plan. They forwarded no recommendation to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission heard this at a final hearing on July 16th, and they did have, they did forward a positive recommendation with a couple of conditions. One condition was to having planning the petitioner and stormwater continue working on the written commitment, and I will go over that in detail. But there were some questions about, specific questions about the environmental fill, what the fill should be tested for, how the testing results would be delivered to county staff, and the timing of that testing. Also, the testing of stormwater or groundwater. So they have broken that out within their written commitment, and we also talk about what would be tested, when it would be tested, and how those results would be delivered. They also include, you know, that they would be responsible for any remediation. The Plan Commission also included the recommendation that is under the ordinance on page, let's see, I'll find the page, written commitment is on page 17. So the ordinance would be page 16. They included the condition that the site pursue a local historic designation for areas shown in Exhibit One. So that's Exhibit One of the written commitment, and I'm going to jump to that in our packet here. So the Monroe County Historic Board of Review, they did include a positive recommendation, if, you know, a favorable recommendation of the Plan Commission if the petitioners pursued local designation of this site. So within the written commitment, they included this illustration that shows property that's on site outside of their proposed fill area, so onsite but outside of the fill, the 27 acres, and also area that is on their adjacent property that they own to preserve that area and do no fill activities. So this here, we can zoom in a little bit, this includes the majority of what is referred to as the long hole quarry hole, which is the long skinny quarry hole, part of a mill structure, and another quarry hole that's located offsite. Okay. I'm going to jump back again. So regarding the written commitment and the environmental concerns, so on page 18, we do have the specific requirements for the environmental testing. In between the Plan Commission and now, we have worked with, met with the petitioner and the property owner representatives, and we've, as well as stormwater, and they've come to an agreement on this draft written commitment. Number three is going to talk about how to test fill. And then point number four is going to go over testing the surface water. So because there's so many karsts on site, we did kind of discuss this quite a bit as to, you know, any concerns and pollution or contamination leaving the site. So stormwater has signed off on this written commitment. I'd like to go ahead and add a note that when it comes to the stormwater review of this site, we are looking at a proposed development plan. If this is approved, the petitioner will file a PUD development plan, and it will continue on to Drainage Board. Drainage Board has heard this, I believe, three times. They've reviewed this development plan, and they've pretty well signed off as much as they can without approval. So they are confident with what they have now, but, you know, they are saying that they will be asking even more in-depth questions when they, if this is approved and they file for a development plan. But Kelsey Latonia of MS4, she's gone through this and is satisfied with the written commitment. Okay, so as a side note, you know, this is for only 27.5 acres of the site. If they want to make any changes in the future, say they want to add mass grading with filling operations to any other part of the site outside of that 27.5 acres, they will be required to seek another outline plan amendment through the Plan Commission and in front of you, the Commissioners again. So this petition did start with adding that use for the whole site, and through conversation, they have limited it down to 27.5. Let's see. So we've gone over historic preservation and the protection that the board has requested that they pursue local designation. We've gone over the written commitment. And I believe I have hit all points that are important here today. There's a lot of information that we discussed at Plan Commission that's in that Plan Commission report that we've kind of, we kind of addressed at that last meeting. So if there's any gaps or anything I can help clarify, I would love to hear your questions. The 90 days for this petition would be up on October 14th. So I believe we have, my understanding is that there's no meeting next week. So I do believe we have the September 25th, October 2nd, October 9th before that 90 days would be up.
Thank you. Anybody have questions?
Yep. Let's see if there's any comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I do remember discussing this in Drainage Board, and there were some concerns, I believe, surrounding a stream that bisected the property and the karst features and all. But as she said, it'll be coming back to us again, and we can discuss those some more.
Commissioner Githens?
You said that there would be, they would be crushing some concrete. What kind of noise can people expect from that?
Yeah, so under the, I believe the noise control would come from the zoning ordinance and not necessarily from the PUD where they follow our Chapter 802 performance standards. So any noise would have to be compatible with Chapter 802. I believe under the new CDO, we are increasing the regulations of how to regulate noise. That's a little bit of a vague answer. I can certainly work and see if the petitioner is proposing maybe a limited timeframe. I would assume they would limit themselves to business hours, but I could get that on writing for you, Commissioner Githens, if that's okay?
I think that that's important, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. When would you like to hear this particular petition? September 25th, October 2nd, October 9th?
Either the 25th or the 2nd.
How about the 2nd?
Okay. Great. All right, so we could put this on our agenda for October 2nd? Is that all right, Ms. Kroselius?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have ordinance 2024-36. Mr. Myers?
Hello there. Good morning. Yes. Good morning. Let me share my screen here, one second.
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. So this is the Thomas Historic Preservation Overlay Rezone, also known as REZ-24-4, or Ordinance 2024-36. And this was heard at the August 20th Monroe County Plan Commission hearing, and they voted nine to zero to forward it with a positive recommendation. All right, so this is located at 6056 East State Road 46, and it is a rezon request to add the HP overlay to this property. It is 0.74 acres and is currently zoned Conservation Residential. Comprehensive plan, as it designated, as Rural Residential, and it's in Salt Creek Township, Section 5. All right, so this also was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Board. On July 15th, the Historic Preservation Board review voted six to zero to forward this petition to the Plan Commission with a positive recommendation citing several criteria from Chapter 810-3, which is the section of the Historic Preservation Chapter of the ordinance that outlines certain criteria that must be met in order for a property to be awarded the HP overlay. And those two criteria that were noted from the Historic Preservation Board were, number one, in association with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of county history, and number three, the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction. All right, so a little bit of background to the HP overlay. It is an overlay, so it does not supersede any of the underlying zoning district, which is the Conservation Residential District. This property is noted in the SHARD database, which is the State Historic Architectural and Archaeological Research Database, and it's ranked as contributing. So a C rating is given to properties meeting basic inventory criterion of being built pre-1940, but that are not necessarily important enough to stand on their own as individually outstanding or notable resources. They are important to the density or continuity of the area's historic fabric, and contributing properties can be listed in the National Register of Historic Places if they are part of a historic district, but not, do not usually qualify individually. This property, as I stated, does not negate the Conservation Residential zoning district underneath, and it does provide protections from other local policies, and it also allows for some flexibility with the zoning uses and things like that. A little bit of background with the history of this property. The petitioner did some research about the original owner, as well as the previous use on the site. So the original owner was noted as being William Greg Allen, who served in Company One, 38th Indiana Veteran Volunteer Infantry during the American Civil War. The petitioner also provided tax records, photos, and newspaper articles detailing the method of construction of the existing residence and its ties to Arbutus Hill due to the proximity of the area known for the Arbutus Flowers' presence. And a little bit more on that in a minute. The petitioner did also provide research on the previous use of the property, which was Southern Comfort Bed and Breakfast. They provided some articles from Herald Times relating to the former Bed and Breakfast that began in the year 2000. The petitioner does not have any interest in keeping on with the Bed and Breakfast use. They would be simply living on the property as a single-family residence. Part of their research with Bed and Breakfast in the area is that they became popular in Bloomington in the late 1990s, when there were about 15 in existence. Moving on to the architecture and style of the house, the petitioner provided the floor plan for the existing structure and included an article that describes the characteristics of the hall and parlor architecture type from the 1850s. The home does appear to have many of the qualifiers under this architectural style, including two rooms wide and one room deep, a stairway and two interior doors leading to the hall and the parlor, a stairway leading to a loft with windows and the gabled ends, and built in heavy timber framing and hand-hewn logs. The house has two chimneys, one for the hall and one for the parlor, and this style was very popular in the southern states, which would have made it a bit more rare in the state of Indiana. The petitioners believe the house could fall into the construction style based on the floor plan, but did defer to the Historic Preservation Board for their expert analysis of the architectural style, and they confirmed that it does exhibit this style, the central passage slash hall and parlor style. Okay, so here on this, in this report, we have the Chapter 810-3. I bolded the criteria that the Historic Preservation Board agreed with that this property exhibits. And again, that's in association with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of county history and the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction. The report also includes general information about the Historic Preservation Overlay District, what you can and can't do in them, and the process for a certificate of occupancy, or excuse me, certificate of appropriateness. That is the process for any property owner to make changes or development on the site. Essentially, the Historic Preservation Board has the authority to review those plans and make sure that they fall in line with the character of the historic nature of the property. Here's the location map, Salt Creek Township. This road that you see here, following south from East State Road 46, is also known as Arbutus Hill, and the petitioner did provide some newspaper clippings that referenced Arbutus Hill. And with conversations with the Historic Preservation Board, it is, it was noted that this area was a destination for Indiana University students and faculty in the 1800s and early 1900s. They would visit it from campus because the Arbutus Flowers bloom on that hill, and it was quite a sight to see back in those days. So a little bit more of a history there. So here on the screen, you see all the pink dots. These are properties listed as contributing based on the SHARD survey, and that blue star on the screen is the existing property, and that's petitioning for the HP overlay. Here's the zoning map. As I stated, Conservation Residential, you have forest reserve to the east and southeast, and then agricultural reserve to the north, and then a state residential 2.5 to the west. Here's the site map. These property lines, I believe, are not 100% accurate, so don't hold them as representative of a survey. And this is the existing house. I'm going to keep scrolling down for some pictures. There's also a structure on the property that is an old carriage house of what appears to be one. So this is the existing residence. And here's the carriage house you can see in the back. More pictures here from the site. The members, some members of the Historic Preservation Board did make a site visit. The petitioner graciously hosted them to give them a tour of the house, and that is where they verified some of those characteristics of the architecture of the property. So here's the comprehensive plan. The findings are all included in the staff report. We do have a letter from the petitioner detailing their extensive research on the property, so I won't go through of that because I already mentioned a lot of it. They also included, or we also have here the SHARD database report that indicates that it's contributing, and then just other exhibits that talk about the floor plan as well as the historic qualities of the property. There's some pictures in here of the inside. I'll just keep scrolling through these, and while I do so, I can also take any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Githens?
No, I just need to read through it all.
It's an amazing property.
Yeah, I'm looking at just the rough-hewn log. Yeah, I'm looking at the, just the rough hewn logs and stuff and the choice and...
Yeah. Yeah. When did you want to put this on our agenda?
Yeah.
25th?
25th.
Okay, yeah. How about the 25th, Mr. Myers?
Okay, works for me.
Excellent, excellent, great. Hopefully that works out for the petitioner. Thank you so much. All right, next we have Ordinance 2024-37, Patterson Rezone.
All right, yes, so this one is REZ-24-6, Patterson Rezone, Ordinance 2024-37. This went to the Plan Commission also on August 20th and was forwarded to you with a vote of nine to zero with a positive recommendation. It is a rezone request from pre-existing business to a state residential. It's located at 3478 South Knight Ridge Road. It's in Salt Creek Township, Section 17, and it's on 2.13 acres. The comprehensive plan as it designated as Rural Residential. It went to the Plan Review Committee as well as the Plan Commission, as I stated, and essentially the property owner removed some of the existing residential structures on the property via a demolition permit in 2023. And then in May of 2024, the petitioner submitted a residential pole barn structure permit to construct a 40-foot by 80-foot residential accessory structure. On, upon review by staff, it was communicated to the petitioner that residential uses are not permitted in the PB zone, and that the former structures around the property were considered pre-existing non-conforming. So in order to permit new residential structures on the property, a rezone is required. Additionally, it was communicated to the petitioner that residential storage structures are limited in square footage when there is not a primary residence on the property. And with this information, the petitioner submitted the rezone application and indicated to staff that they will adjust their construction plans for the accessory structure to include a dwelling unit within, so that it will now classify as a residential building permit application, which does require a certified plot plan. But they won't be limited in the storage structure size now that it has a residence incorporated. Due to the lot size of 2.13 acres, the petitioner chose to choose the rezone to Estate Residential, which only requires a one-acre minimum lot size. Other districts in the area are at that two and a half acre minimum lot size, so to avoid a situation where we create another nonconformity, the petitioner elected to choose the State Residential District. I have the definitions of both of those districts here, the pre-existing business district and the state residential district. I will note, the draft zoning map of the county development ordinance indicates the subject property will transition into the Conservation Residential 2.5 Zone, if not rezoned under this petition. And the CBR Zone, Conservation Residential, and having only 2.13 acres, that would basically make it a nonconforming lot. It would require a minimum lot size in order to develop. So by rezoning ahead of time, the petitioner is eager to get started. They want to get to that State Residential District. The planning staff, with respect to this petition, if it is to be approved, will ensure that the CDO transitions the property into a similar zone known as the Residential 1 Zone, which will allow for that one-acre lot size and not have to require a minimum lot size variance in the future. Here I have the design standards for the State Residential District from Chapter 804, location map as well. We're out on Knight Ridge Road along State Road 446. Here's the current zoning. The pink is pre-existing business. We have Forest Reserve in the area in that darker blue, and then Conservation Residential in the yellow. Site conditions, there's plenty of buildable area on the front end of the property, and we do get into those steeper slopes as we move south across the property. Here's some aerial pictometry of the property and some pictures as well. And the comprehensive plan designated Rural Residential. This comprehensive plan discussion section highlights green areas where there, the rezone request is in line with the comprehensive plan, and anywhere that is not in line with the comprehensive plan would have been highlighted in gray. We've got the findings of fact here as well, the brief letter to the, the Plan Commission stating their request for the property in its rezone. Here is a draft site plan. This site plan does not show the new developments of including a residence in, within the storage structure. So as part of the subsequent actions after this rezone petition, if it is to be approved, they would incorporate that, and we would have to see that as a certified plot plan in order to issue permits. Here's just some preliminary drawings they had for the structure. Again, this was right before they elected to include a dwelling unit inside. We have the permitted uses from the pre-existing business district. Given that the property is now vacant, all low-intensity uses of the LB and GB zones are technically permitted on the site. Again, the petitioner is seeking to establish residential use on the property, therefore they're not interested in these uses. Here in Exhibit 4, I have the uses available in the State Residential District. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Githens?
The, the map that you showed us has a good bit, yes, there's, there's places for buildable, but is there sufficient flat area for the septic?
That will be a requirement, septic permit. It's my understanding that, I actually don't know how far along the petitioner is with getting a septic permit. The property did exhibit a residence in the past, so there's likely an existing septic system. I cannot speak to its condition, but we would require a verification of a, of a valid septic permit before issuing a residential building permit.
And the, the proposed pole barn, that's not going to be for a business purpose, correct?
No, it is just for residential storage purposes.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
No, I don't at this time, thank you.
The petition makes a great deal of sense. When do you want to hear this petition?
25th's okay with me, what about you?
Okay, would, would the petitioner be available, or you be available on the 25th for this as well?
I will be available, yes.
Okay, perfect. I'm not sure we need the petitioner here because it's, it's, it's fairly straightforward. Okay, great, thank you so much, appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
Anything else for work session? All right, great. With that, we are adjourned. Our next meeting is September 25th. Thank you all.